Good evening. Should like to call this Tuesday, December 5th, 2017 City Council Meeting to order, please. Madam Clerk, your call, please.
Councilmember Bertani.
Here.
Councilmember Moy.
Here.
Councilmember Vicaro.
Here.
Vice Mayor Tim.
Here.
And Mayor Price.
Here. And the invocation this evening will be led by Chaplain William Lemnielson. Chaplain, please.
Help them as well. Thank you, Lord, for all you do for us. We love you. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you.
Amen. Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, may I say something?
Please.
Our chaplain only has four more shifts in fire and he's retiring. And I want to thank him publicly for coming to do this, but the heart that you bring to your job and the love that you bring to your job that helps people out there who are in dire situations many times and helping our firefighter medics all the time. And God bless you and God speed. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. And the Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Councilwoman Bertani, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Please join me in saluting our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Council reports. Councilman Vicaro, would you like to begin, please?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, as Captain Lemniel said, I think our thoughts and prayers are with the firefighters down in Southern California, and I believe that some of our firefighters were dispatched down there recently. Am I correct, Mr. City Manager?
That's correct. We had crews head down this evening.
Okay. So I know our, all our thoughts and prayers are with them and the other firefighters down south. And all the, all the people down there that are going to be displaced and are displaced right now, it's just another, you know, terrible thing, you know, with the fires. Anyway, just quickly, I just wanted to mention a couple of events I attended. The Jelly Belly Tree Lighting, this is my, my second year that I was able to attend that. And I told the mayor last year that, I said, I think I'm going to be there every year from now on. I mean, you know, Herm Rollins and his, his family and his crew over there, they do a fabulous job. It was just, it was, it was so much fun. And then our downtown tree lighting, I believe, was maybe the best ever as far as the attendance. It was unbelievable. I just, the performances of, you know, everyone, the Holy Spirit Choir and all the dancers that were there. And just, just it seemed like such a happy crowd. Everybody was really happy to be there. And I was, I was happy. And, you know, I have to give credit to Margaret Manzo and Scott Tonison, the people that run our downtown. They do, they did a great job. And I emailed them both and told them how great of a job it was this year. And then on Saturday, I want to say, was that December 26th, Mr. City Manager, the downtown business?
November.
November. I'm sorry, November 26th. Right. And that, that was really also a nice event where the small business owners got to kind of show off what they have down there. And I think our downtown is really starting to progress pretty nicely. We have some nice new, new businesses coming in down there. So I was very impressed by that. And overall, November, November was a good month, I think, for the city of Fairfield and the downtown and tree lighting and everything else. So that's my report. And thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Bertani, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, everyone, for coming out this evening, for watching from home. I don't have a report this evening. I just want to wish everybody a very Merry Christmas and Happy New Year, a happy holiday season. As we get started toward the holidays, I just want us to be ever mindful of how blessed this city is for having great residents, a great heart for the people of this city, great leaders, my colleagues. Thank you all for everything that you do and sacrifice for this city every single day, for our staff. I'm feeling just really thankful. I'm feeling really thankful for being a member of this city council and for being a resident of this great city. And so let's be mindful and remember and count ourselves as Fairfield residents and to remember to be blessed because we do live in one of the greatest cities in this United States of America. And that's what I have to say for the evening. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You. Councilwoman Boy, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I too don't have a report as a report, but I did want to shout out to people who don't get, I don't think enough, recognition. And that is the people who work with the city and Fun on the Run. They go into the most dangerous neighborhoods in our city where there are children, homeless children, children who live 10 people in a one-bedroom apartment, and they bring them joy. And today I got to witness this. I'm over at Heather House and they came, as they do on Tuesdays, and the, all the homeless children got new coats. And one little boy was crying because he'd never had a new coat ever. And it was interesting to see how much, and I thought to myself and said, shame on you, cat boy. You know, I grew up and I, I had a new coat. My sister got the hand-me-downs. But I, I had new coats. And I didn't know, I didn't know that there were people out there like this, other children. And those folks who work at Fun on the Run love those kids. They show them tremendous companionship. They play with them. They teach them. They teach them healthy eating. And it, it's just amazing. And it's, it's one of the programs here in Fairfield that we don't talk a lot about. There are a lot of them out there that we don't talk a lot about. And this is one I just thought I'd like to say that I'm really thankful for, for these children, you know, all over. Crowley Lane, that's one of their busiest places, Crowley Lane. Crowley Lane is a tough spot. And we had a couple of people murdered there over the last year. And it's a tough spot. And these kids don't get to choose where they live. Yet Fun on the Run, they go in there smiling, same people on the same crew that come by ours. And they are, they're unbelievable, always upbeat. What can I do? What can I help them? Does that child need this? You know, what do you need? Unbelievable. And that's who we have working for us here at the city of Fairfield. I'm so proud, like Councilwoman Bertani said, to be honored by the people, my bosses, our bosses here in the city of Fairfield, to put us here. And thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Vice Mayor?
Yeah, thank you. You know, one of the things that, that I got to do this week, which was actually, I've never done before, is I got to take over a Facebook page. And I didn't even know what that meant, but I got to go live on Toro University's Facebook page. And for an hour, I could blog and, and actually, it's almost like Skyping. But one of the interesting things was, they said I can talk about anything I want to talk about. Tell us about yourself. Yeah, okay, I'm a council member. And, but it gave me a platform probably to talk about what goes on in Fairfield and some of the things that fly under the radar that we probably don't know about, or at least the citizens don't know about. And we started talking about the, the new tanker at Travis and, and what they're trying to do to bed it down there and, and how the city, basically surrounding out there, there's probably about 6,000 homes in the pipeline, the new train station. And I've been asked, people say, are they using the train station? Oh, yeah, there's actually a lot of people that are using the train station. It's amazing how many people now, you'll see them out there and they're taking their bikes and they're getting on. And, and you can go to Emeryville and then take a link over to downtown and downtown San Francisco. And until I actually started looking into it, because, I mean, the train station's been around since probably the late 90s is, I think, when they started planning it here. That was, that was pretty interesting. Then we talked about water rates, and we'll talk about that in a little bit. But why does it cost so much? What's the infrastructure? What's Fairfield doing? And Fairfield is expanding. And, and when I had mentioned about 6,000 homes in the pipeline, and these are homes that have pretty much been approved and it's coming, and how are you going to pay for it? But then, and you guys touched on it with, how do we take care of the needy here? And one of the, a couple of things that I talked about, I talked about a little bit about the Levin, Fun on the Run, Heart to Heart. Heart to Heart is a group of, a group of volunteers, pretty much, that try to help out termed-out foster kids. When you're 18 years old, pretty much you're shown the door and, and they try to help. But, but Fun on the Run, if you get a chance, man, you get to put a sand hat on and you get to go deliver, help deliver toys, you, you make kids Christmases. So there's a lot of things that we can become involved in. I think we get so immune sometimes. We're just trying to take care of the city. You got this and you got that. And if you open up your eyes and you see how other people live, it's, sometimes it's very humbling. But it also makes me very, very proud to represent the city because you're representing, hopefully, the good stuff. And then finally, we have a, we've got a pretty tough year coming ahead, but like I said, there's, there's a lot of things in the pipeline. There's a lot of jobs coming here that you wouldn't know about, where the old, I call it the old Copart building, but it's Partnership Healthcare, and how many jobs that'll bring. And then, of course, we're still talking, you know, Blue Apron is still talking. Now whether or not they're going to come, I don't know. But that's, it's right now, it's in the springtime, and it's about 1,200 jobs. That building is almost finished. Then we talk about where are these people going to be housed? If you look at Santa Rosa, Santa Rosa probably lost, what, 25% of their housing? I mean, that's 25% of their housing. And these people need to live somewhere. And the pressure it's putting on in the Bay Area and it's moving this way. So we have a lot of obstacles, I guess, ahead of us, but we have some answers. And there's people that are trying to help. And then finally, the tree lighting ceremony. This year I had the most fun. My granddaughters were, I was so afraid they were going to just jetson off the stage. They were so excited Santa was there. But I was also very pleased. There was, I, I met an Air Force Colonel, Teresa Weeman, Colonel Weeman? Okay. Double E, got it. But, but I saw, and I was kind of teasing some of our, some of our, our leaders in the city about, oh, you got to show up to this. But I think we had a good time. The weather was perfect. And if you could see what we could see from the stage, you're looking down Texas Street, and it was actually all lit up. I mean, it didn't look like the Texas street that I've, I've known for a long time. So I want to give a shout out, yeah, to Margaret Manzo and Scott Tonison, the businesses that stayed open. It was nice. So this is probably the most I've talked ever since on something like this. But it all started with Toro University for the Giving Tuesday, and it just kind of continued. So, you know, the last week or two has been pretty cool. So, Mayor, thank you, sir.
Thank you. And it feels good to feel good, doesn't it?
Yeah.
It really does. Well, let me just be very, very brief. I want to talk a little bit about an annual program in Fairfield that clearly illustrates what it's like to live in a city such as this. And that was the 10th Annual Breakfast with Santa over at Applebee's, sponsored again by the Kiwanis Club. And the fire truck rolled up, Santa Claus came, and Mrs. Christmas made a surprise appearance. But those children and their parents, 163 of them, had a breakfast in a restaurant. And for some of them, that was the very first time. Just a wonderful, wonderful experience. And then, of course, and I know the city manager wants to talk about this too, but let me just introduce the topic for you. Last week, our community development folks, economic development folks, put together a tour of the Anheuser-Busch Brewery for a Japanese manufacturer of noodle machines. And their plan is to produce soup in the United States. And they wanted to visit a facility that was in the food and beverage industry. And what an impressive three hours that was. And as a sidelight, let me just add that Genentech is laying off some 125, 150 people. The manager at Anheuser-Busch, as we were finishing that tour, said, "We sent some of our HR folks and employees over to Genentech today to talk to those who are losing their jobs because they have the skill sets that we need here at Anheuser-Busch." And that, folks, makes you feel pretty good. And then one final comment about Fun on the Run. Fun on the Run, the Community Services Foundation, is an excellent example of people coming together to make life a little bit better for those, and Chuck, you remember this very well, those who live in apartment complexes and don't have many opportunities. It's reason that we celebrate Christmas, and the joy is everywhere. Mr. City Manager, your report, please.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I wanted to sort of keep with the theme of being thankful. And the, the mayor alluded to one opportunity. So last week, our economic development staff, Eric Dakin and Bob Burris, did a fabulous job of coordinating a tour for us, pardon me, of a company based in Japan that had manufacturers ramen noodles, soba noodles, and udon noodles. And they wanted to see in real time what it's like to do business in Fairfield. And they wanted to get a thorough tour of Anheuser-Busch. And Anheuser-Busch, I'll just say, wonderful community partner. They took two hours out of their day. They didn't have to. And they gave us a very comprehensive tour of their facility. And we spent a good three hours with them, answered all their questions about the community. And I'm pleased to say that of all the cities that they're looking at, we got word last night that we're their top choice. So they're going to be taking a serious look at a couple of properties in town. And what distinguishes us and what, what we really believe is our value proposition and what actually bears fruit is the following. It's our high-quality water system. So the decisions that have been made by you in the past to build a high-quality water system means something to the business community. And so we are sought after city because of that. Our, the JPA we have at the sewer district means something to the business community. There's capacity there. There's technology there. And people who are in the food industry, they gravitate to that. And our location, being between San Francisco-Sacramento, means something to the business community. We are accessible to a lot of different markets very easily. So I'm, I'm really hoping that that business prospect moves forward. And again, I want to thank Eric Dakin and Bob Burris for really jumping on this, being aggressive, being entrepreneurial, and wanting to move the community forward. So I celebrate their accomplishment. In that vein, I also really want to draw out our building division. So I was remiss at the last council meeting. Big Five celebrated a grand opening not too long ago. And what I didn't appropriately highlight was the Herculean effort it took of our building division to make that happen. So no less than a week before that business wanted to open, they had to completely revamp their mechanical systems. Our building inspectors and building division were jawning on the spot. They devoted 100% attention to this and understood the importance of getting that business open before the holiday season. So they put a time and energy and attention into that to making that happen. So I want to thank publicly David Doyle and his staff for making that project a reality. And then lastly, I want to thank Emily Comas in the Finance Department. They recently received notice that they received, once again, the GFPA budget award. And that's a very rigorous process and evaluation process to get that budget award. And it's a testament to the hard work of Emily and Brian in terms of putting together a top-notch budget. And so I know you, Council, have been really clear with me about how much you appreciate that budget document. And so thank you very much, Emily and Brian, for all your hard work. I appreciate it. And with that, I also just want to express a lot of great gratitude and kudos to Margaret Manzo and the Main Street Association. It was a fabulous holiday night at Light's. It was fun to be there with you. It was fun to celebrate. The Matt Garcia Foundation, the games they put together was just a tremendous amount of fun. And I didn't do it this year, but next year, I'm going to ride a pony. So it was a lot of fun. So happy holidays.
And Mr. City Manager, are there any changes to the agenda?
There are no changes. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, your report, please.
I just wanted to mention that Gail Spears and I just put up a really cute display in the City Hall lobby. And what it is, there are kids' letters thanking first responders and firefighters for all of their efforts during the Atlas fire. So if you get a chance you're walking through the lobby at City Hall, take a look. Thanks.
And we turn now to process for public comments. Madam Clerk, if you would, please.
Speakers may address items on this agenda at the time each item is considered. Under public comments, the public may speak on items not on the agenda, but within the jurisdiction of the city council, provided that no action may be taken on off-agenda items except as authorized by law. Off-agenda items from the public will be taken under consideration without discussion by the council and may be referred to staff to speak on an agenda item. Please complete a speaker's card and give it to me prior to public comment on that item. Speakers are requested to limit their comments to four minutes total with one minute to summarize the remarks. Thank you.
And our first speaker will be Jeff Trager. And Jeff has some really exciting news to share again this evening. Jeff?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, at the Downtown Theater this, this month, oh, thank you. There we go. Coming up this Saturday, the marvelous Carlos Reyes brings his soulful Christmas to the Downtown Theater. Carlos is a magnificent entertainer who's done three shows over the last three years. All of them have sold out. Carlos has played for, had a private audience with the Pope. He has played for four presidents. He's gone to Cuba to work with the children. This is a, this is a magnificent, magnificent musician who only puts together some of the great shows you'd ever want to see. He's bringing 11-time Grammy Award winner Tony Lindsay with Santana, Janis Maxxey Reed, who worked with Lionel Richie and Stevie Wonder, and Claire D., one of the really fine jazz vocalists. So this is what we have going on this Saturday night at 8:00. For more information, go to DowntownTheater.com where you can find out all the shows that's going on throughout the year. And also on the 15th, for a three-year, excuse me, three, three years, okay, three-week run is the Disney's Beauty and the Beast put on by the Missouri Street Theater. So I want to wish everybody Merry Christmas and Happy New Year and Happy Hanukkah and all those good things. And I want to thank all those who have come and attended the shows down at the theater. It's a magnificent, beautiful venue. I think the more people discover it, I think the better because it's, it's really, it's really a gem. So that's it for me. And thank you very much.
Thank you, Jeff. And our next speaker will be Lauren Small, to be followed by Kathleen Littrell, please.
Hi, I'm Lauren Small. This is Kathleen Littrell. The McKinley Veto Homelessness Assistance Act of 1987 defines homelessness as individuals who lack a fixed, regular, and adequate nighttime residence and have a primary nighttime residence, that is supervised publicly or privately operated shelter designed to provide temporary living accommodations, an institution that provides a temporary residence for individuals intended to institutionalize or a public and private place not designed for or ordinarily used as a regular sleeping accommodation for human beings. More and more people are falling under this classification due to various reasons, one of which is being, is a steep rate that the average rent is rising as well as evictions. Rent has increased by almost $1,000 in some places in the last two years. The average rent in Fairfield is $1,736 a month. And you have to make at least two to three times the rent to be able to move in, which means a family must make between $3,472 and $5,208 a month. For one person that is making $21 an hour to $32 an hour at full-time rate before taxes. However, the living wage in Solano County is only $12.31 an hour.
Hello, I'm Kathy. So as a resident of Solano County, my family and I have been staying with family for almost a year. My husband lost his job and with no sympathy from the apartment complex, we were evicted. At the time, my income alone was less than $2,000 a month, and I was working full-time. We went to several community partners that were recommended by friends, family, and even other community partners. And they all told me that I made too much money for any help. That's less than $2,000 a month. I don't know how that's too much money, especially with three children, five people in the household. So being that I had three kids, there was no way that I could work two jobs. Since being evicted, we both got new jobs and started making more money. However, the apartment complex filed a judgment and garnished my wages, which then brought my income back down to where I started before. Basically, no one would rent to us because of eviction on our record, and we couldn't find help anywhere. All I can say is how can we solve this growing issue? And how many families need to continue to suffer in this community? Thank you.
Thank you very much for the very poignant testimony. And our next speaker will be Tyler Hardy, please, to be followed by Nathan Ortiz.
Good evening. My name is Tyler Hardy. When driving through the beautiful city of Fairfield, the last thing that you want to see is trash on the street. I'm aware that there have been steps towards picking up trash on the streets of Fairfield, but I still think there are efforts that, that we can do better. In the next couple of minutes, I will talk about the trash on the street, the progress that I've seen, and what else can be done. I attend Solano Community College. Recently, I was driving along Sussoon Valley Road to get to school one day, and I noticed how much trash was on the side of the road. There was, there was paper, plastic, as well as bottles. Fairfield is a beautiful city, and although I am not a resident, I, along with, with everyone else, want to see the city clean. After seeing the trash that was on the ground, I recalled recently seeing a woman that was walking along Sussoon Valley Road that was picking up trash. I don't recall seeing this much trash when this was happening. And this made me realize that the trash had not, had not been getting picked up. This individual picked up trash several days throughout the month, and the street was kept clean. No one wants the city to be kept dirty, so it is obvious that we have to take more action. When the woman that picked up trash cleaning streets, the streets were never dirty. When this stopped, however, the trash began to pile up. I propose that people start caring about our streets by first stop littering. The trash is coming from somewhere. And second, people have to, and second, I propose that people come out several times a month to clean up the trash. If this is done, I can see a drastic change in our, in our street's future. I've talked about the trash on the streets of Fairfield, the progress, and what else we can do about it. I am aware that there have been steps towards keeping this, keeping the streets clean. I am aware that there have been steps towards keeping the streets clean in Fairfield, but I still think that we can do better. I propose we keep the streets clean. Thank you.
Mr. City Manager, Tyler, hold on a second, please.
Okay, so don't leave. We're going to sign you up right now. So Julie over there is going to get your name and number. So you're right, we can do a better job, and we should do a better job. So let me tell you about what's going on. So that woman you saw, her name's Anna Patero. She's actually a teacher over at Solano Community College. And so her and I got into a conversation about this very issue about keeping the community clean. So I'll tell you, I'm personally committed to keeping a couple of areas in the community clean, Lebel Park and parts of the linear trail. And we now have a new program called an Adopt a Street Program. And I would like to see you give your name and number to Julie back there. And I want to see you get a bunch of students over at Solano Community College and join the campaign. So we are fully committed to getting the community out there. We agree with you. We want to keep the community clean, and we can do better. And I would love to be out there with you on a weekday or a weekend keeping the community clean, because I agree with you, if we work together, we can do it. So we're all on the same page on this one, and we're ready to get going. Thank you for coming out. I really appreciate it.
Tyler, hold on, please. The Vice Mayor has an observation for you.
Tyler, two things. Number one, I know that the Matt Garcia Foundation always schedules, well, probably monthly cleanups. Yeah, last Saturday of the month, right? But I'm going to bust out our city manager. What a lot of people don't know is he actually goes out and picks up trash. You wouldn't know it when you saw him. You probably wouldn't even know who he was. But, I mean, down linear trails, some of the parks, and he will go and pick up trash. Like I said, probably nobody knows until I just told them. But it's pretty impressive when city manager is out picking up garbage. So, and Anna, yes, your instructor. It's pretty remarkable. So again, this is, you know, sometimes we're our own worst enemy. We don't tell people what we're doing, because it's like, can you get your hand back far enough to pat yourself on the back? But there are things that fly under the radar. People do, and they don't really, they're not looking for the recognition, they just do it. So I'm actually glad, this is a chance to actually blow somebody else's horn, whether it be Anna's or our city manager, and now you. It's kind of like, hey, welcome to the party, pal. So Tyler, thanks, and good luck. And Mr. City Manager, thanks for doing what you do. So I'm not going to snitch anybody else off right now. I'll just wait, but thanks.
Tyler, thank you for the gift of caring. Thank you.
Is that Anna in the back?
No.
Oh, okay. It's hard to see with the glare.
Nathan, would you come forward, please?
Tyler, thank you very much. Thank you for caring. Earlier, we talked about being thankful for our community and for being part of such a great community. And so you exemplify why we are thankful. Thank you for caring. I'm sure that you have a lot of things to be thinking about, a million other things that you could be doing, but you are down here at City Council meeting on Tuesday evening after a long day at school to talk about this issue. That is very impressive. Thank you so much for caring. We appreciate you.
Thank you. Nathan, want to come forward, please? This is Nathan Ortiz, please.
Good evening, everyone in City Council. So my name is Nathan Ortiz, and I currently attend Solano Community College. I currently live in Vacaville, near Kalasen Elementary, and often travel to Fairfield, whether it's because of their great food, the town center, and even for my school. I take Vanden Road to commute because it's the closest to my house and it's the most convenient. But towards the intersection of Peabody and Vanden Road, coming from Vacaville, a bundle of potholes are to be braced for. People speed over these potholes, and it shouldn't be happening, but it does. And because of this, it has caused me to draw concern that someone will eventually get hurt and possibly die. The potholes could cause a tire to pop and possibly cause the person to swerve into the other side of the road, hitting an upcoming driver. The potholes in the road could also causes some drivers to have to maneuver in a certain way, which could also cause an accident. I feel that if the city paid, got rid of the potholes on Vanden Road, a safer commute and environment for not only the residents, but the construction workers that work there would be created. Thank you for giving me your time.
Thank you, Nathan. Good observations and good suggestions, too. Appreciate it. And our final speaker will be Damian Brodak. Damian, please.
Good evening. Good evening, council members. Hi, my name is Damian Brodnax, and I am, I don't have a problem, but I would love to let you know that we have a professional baseball league, and we are interested in possibly getting a team in the city of Fairfield, if that's okay with Fairfield. The teams... We can sign up right now if you want to. But yes, we have a league, and it will start at 18 and over. And our main objective is to get players signed to Major League Baseball. But we also would like to help the kids further their education and help them to get, you know, into a four-year college with their skills. And I really like Fairfield. I think it's a good place for, well, it is a good place for families. And I feel that it's a family, a family environment. And what better way to help families get together by going to a baseball game in Fairfield? And I feel that Laurel Creek is the perfect spot. And, you know, and I also feel that it will help the kids to, you know, be able to see adults play and to get, you know, to get off the streets and be able to watch some wholesome baseball. And I think that, you know, it's the other few cities that we're targeting. Kind of nervous up here, I don't know why, but...
You're doing very well. Don't worry about it.
Okay, good. I used to work for the school district for 10 years. Just recently, I'm a truck driver now. But I'm definitely, you know, into the community, into the kids. And Anna also worked for the Matt Garcia Learning Center. And I think that's about it.
Thank you, Damian. And if you can stick around after the meeting, I'd like to talk with you a little bit, too. City Manager?
And then also, Damian, I'd just like to, if you could meet Anna Matola in the back, she's our Director of Parks and Recreation. So she's a great person for you to connect with this evening, to exchange contact information and to pursue your opportunity.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much for coming out.
Yeah. We turn now to the consent calendar and all items on the consent calendar. Is there another card coming?
Who's going to speak?
Was there one more public comment speaker? No? Okay, sorry.
All matters on the consent calendar are to be approved with one motion unless a member of the council or the public requests separate action be taken on a specific item. And I do have, I don't have any comments for this one, Sally. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar as submitted? It's been moved by Vice Mayor Second and by Councilman Moy. All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. We turn to public hearings, item number four, please. Okay? Madam Clerk, if you would, please.
Continued public hearing and resolution 2017-270 of the City Council of the City of Fairfield increasing water rates and providing annual increases through 2021, and first reading an introduction of ordinance 2017-17 of the City Council of the City of Fairfield, amending section 22.57(c) of the Fairfield City Code to provide for water rates to be established by resolution. And our speaker is Assistant Public Works Director Felix Rezenberg.
Felix, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council. Felix Rezenberg, Assistant Public Works Director over Utilities, primarily water. Today, I'll go over some information that we've actually brought before council a couple of different times, so I'll be fairly quick in covering it. And then part of this presentation will be handled by Acting Finance Director Emily Combs, and we'll both go through what we've talked about in the past. And then throughout the remainder of the public hearing process, we can answer questions and be available to help clear anything up. So with that, we'll get moving. Try not to shut it off inadvertently. No guarantees. So the rate increase that's being proposed, just to kind of put it in perspective, right now, the water utility is in a fairly stable financial position, and that's coming off of significant economic downturn at the beginning of the decade, followed by a drought, which challenged revenues. But the utility was able to withstand that without any special rate surcharges or anything during the drought. Again, we're in good shape, but as Emily will show a little later in the presentation, it won't take a whole lot for that to change. And there's a number of factors and sensitivities that could change where we're at, certainly absent a rate increase. So part of the challenge for this utility, and it's not unique, this is going on nationwide, really, but it's a replacement of some of our aging infrastructure. The city of Fairfield has roughly $600 million worth of water infrastructure. That's water treatment plants, pump stations, reservoirs, and pipelines. About half of the value of that infrastructure is in our pipelines, which are buried and which people don't see. And I'll show some of what the concern is as we move forward. But, so that's part of the reason why it's, you know, in our staff opinion, that it's important that we move forward with at least a modest rate increase right now. The other thing that's, you know, the, some of the things, the business is shown below, and some of the comments that were made during council member comments and city manager's comments highlight just how valuable this water system is to the community in bringing in business and in providing highly reliable water 24/7/365. We have an excellent track record of high-quality water with high-quality service. So this is, this is the crux of the problem moving forward. It's the amount of pipelines that have been stalled, have been installed since the town became incorporated. Those are miles of new pipeline that have been installed in the various decades. So pre-1950, we were a fairly small city. Beginning in the 1950s in the subdivision era, we started growing. New pipelines were installed at developer expense most of the time, but then they become ours, and we have to own them, maintain them, repair them, and ultimately replace them. So that just shows the growth of the city and the miles of new pipe added, which is fairly dramatic jump in the late 50s. This gives you an example of where that growth occurred. The yellow area is the oldest part of Fairfield. We've addressed some of those pipelines in the work we've done over the last 20 years. We've got a fair amount coming up in the near term, but it's relatively modest in the grand scheme of things. You start seeing the pipelines installed in the 60s that'll be coming due somewhere in the late 2020s, 2030s, and then it really grows almost exponentially with, you know, it's a little frightening, honestly, from a professional standpoint, just what this, what this ultimately means. But again, this is going on everywhere. It's part of, part of the challenge of being a wealthy country that has done well and has provided phenomenal service up to this point in time. It's how do we keep that service going? And how do we continue to enjoy the quality of life, not only for us, but for our children and our grandchildren? And there will be some real challenges there. So what this looks like in annual spend on pipeline replacement only, right now in this next decade, and what we're currently basing our suggested rate increase on is just this relatively modest amount of pipeline replacement to deal with some of our oldest pipelines. That's ongoing work. We have some of those projects going now, and in the next five years, we have a number identified that are, again, relatively small compared to when we start hitting the 2030 timeframe. Now, and just to, one of the things we're charged with doing as staff and managers and operators of this system is continually monitoring. These are based on kind of rules of thumb, what we've seen historically on the life of pipelines. But trust the staff here, you have really, really good staff in your water group and your public works group. And part of what our job to do is to absolutely maximize the life of those pipes to try and prevent this tidal wave of costs from crashing down too rapidly. And so there's a lot of care that has and will continue to be spent to make sure that we're doing things as efficiently as possible, and we're really getting every dollar out of these assets that we can. So, you know, and with that, just to highlight a couple of things that the water utility has done historically and continues to do, we do constantly evaluate what we're doing and how we do it. The North Bay Regional Plant, which is shared with Vacaville, saved us a lot of money at the time it was built. It continues to save us money every year we operate. We put solar panels out at the North Bay Regional Water Treatment Plant. That actually is a number that's in error, the $255,000. That's been savings over a three-year period prior to this year. We're saving another $100,000 this year as PG&E's prices go up. We do anticipate that facility to save us between $1 and $3 million over the life of a 20-year power purchase agreement. So those are real savings that we're seeing right now and will continue to. And again, that's innovative power management. We've done a lot of refinancing of bonds that lowers the, essentially, the debt we pay on borrowed money. We continue to optimize our power costs and chemical costs through a variety of means. And one of the things that we've been able to do over really the last 25 years, the city has regularly had small, modest rate increases, but almost every single year. And what that does is it creates essentially a cost control, cost stability, which is important to residents and to businesses, that they don't get kind of a sticker shock in any given year. It's never fun. It's never fun to happen, even in a small amount, on a regular basis. But it's a lot more manageable for most people who can at least know what's kind of coming, plan for it, and hopefully have some wage growth and business growth, or whatever the case may be, to accommodate with so many other costs that we all deal with, that rise on us continually. So just looking at some of the capital planning and what the goal is at the end of this four-year, well, I think it's really, yeah, so it is at the end of the four- or five-year period is to have this money available for capital spending so that we can continue to renew and replace the water system, as well as some of the other components, over these next four or five years. It's a lot of water main replacement work. It's completion of our east-west transmission line project, which will improve water supply reliability and redundancy to the Cordelia area by allowing service from the North Bay Regional Plant in northeast Fairfield. It's dealing with a number of relatively minor and modest distribution system upgrades with our reservoirs and pump stations. And then we have some minor work at treatment plants that's ongoing. And let's see, so this just kind of highlights some of that, how the money has been set aside and what it would be used to cover. And with this, I'm going to turn it over to our Acting Finance Director, Emily Combs.
Thanks, Felix. So what we have, what you're looking at right now is our current water fund five-year forecast. You've seen this before. This is without any rate increases assumed. So as you can see, in the first two years of that five-year forecast, we look okay. It's really in 1920 that we get into trouble, and you can see that we fall below our debt service coverage minimum ratios. And what that means is we'd be in violation of our debt covenants, which would affect our bond ratings and could affect our ability to borrow funds in the future. This next slide is basically the same... This next slide is basically the same five-year forecast, but it's four years, and it incorporates the 4% annual rate increase. And as you can see, we're in much better shape, we meet our debt service coverage minimum ratios. But on the bottom half of that table, what we've done is we've provided you with a sort of sensitivity analysis. And the reason we thought this was so important is because over the last 15 years, we've experienced two major events. The first event was the recession, and during the recession, we saw revenues decrease by as much as 26%. The second event was the drought. And at that time, we saw revenues decrease by as much as 10%. So, and looking at what would happen if revenues were to fall 5%, with a 4% annual rate increase, we would be okay. If debt, if revenues were to fall 10% for every year of that four years, we would probably be in trouble. So this next slide is basically demonstrating how, whatever rate increase we enact today, how that helps to reduce the amount of rate increase we'll need to do in the future. And that's in order to achieve that $35 million reserve that Felix had shown above earlier. So as you can see under scenario four, if we were to enact a 4% increase, based on our projections, we're looking at an 8% increase in that fifth year. However, if we were to enact a 1% increase in the fifth year, based on our projections, we're thinking we're going to have to see an increase of about 14% to achieve that $35 million mark. Just looking at how we rate in comparison to our neighbors, the LaHo enacted an 18.2% increase in June of 2017 with CPI adjustments. Through 2021, Vacaville did 5.5% increase for four years, starting in 2016. Davis did increases anywhere between 9% to 15%. Benicia did 35% over four years, and Dixon did a fixed 38. So our recommendation to you tonight is to hold a public hearing and approve, proposed increase in water rates annually by 4% for four years, beginning January 1st of 2018. And with that, if you have any questions or comments, Felix is still here.
Colleagues, any comments or questions? Thank you, Emily. Thank you, Felix. I will open the public hearing and have a few speaker cards, and our first speaker will be Robert Walker, please. Mr. Walker?
Good evening. My name is Robert Walker. As far as the cost of water, my water bill is just about what we used to pay for two months, what I'm paying every month now. And you want to jack it up more? Number two, your water bill, my water bill is more than my PG&E bill, and it shouldn't be that way. This is month after month after month. I've got a pool that I've let go. Mosquito abatement comes out, chucks little blocks in there every year, because I can't afford to put the water into it. I'm retired. I'm not a city employee retired. I'm a telephone retired. We don't get these great, big, huge retirements that you guys get, or the police department, fire department, city employees. And what you're doing is you're hurting, even though you want to build up a $35 billion, million-dollar budget. I don't know. It doesn't make sense. You're just going to force people to leave, I guess. You can only pay so much. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. Alan Durian, please. And if I mispronounced her name, please correct me. He can't see.
Thank you so much. Good evening, council members. My name's Alan Durbin. I'm a retired public transit employee and contract negotiator, and I'm also a published author. And I did some research on the proposed rate hike, and there were a few points I'd like to make. Number one is that the 4% per year rate is more than twice the, the federal rate of core inflation. So, in my view, the hike should not exceed 2% per year. Secondly, the last rate hike was in 2012, five years ago, and we really don't have any information that's public to show how those funds were spent relative to the $35 million in proposed new capital work. Third, I would hope that the city would also check out a very informative website, published by the Environmental Working Group. It's, it's ewg.org, and I referenced it in my written statement that I handed to the clerk. And it has some very valuable information about water quality relative to the country. And there are some improvements that, that really need to be made, especially with chromium 6, which is highly carcinogenic, and it currently exceeds the state-recommended levels. So I'd like to point that out there. Other points I raised in my written statement, and I hope you carefully consider that. And, once again, I believe that there has to be more disclosure in terms of details about capital expenditures relative to revenues, and it should be itemized year by year, and it should be available publicly on, you know, the water agency's website, because I don't believe that information has been available so far in detail, and it's hard to make rational planning decisions unless enough information is available. And the public certainly has a right to all that information, especially since water agencies are currently exempt from the Public Records Act, and therefore, they only have to disclose whatever they want to disclose. And I think this is a very major problem throughout the United States, including Fairfield, in spite of the, the high quality of the, of the staff. I'm not demeaning the staff whatsoever. I think they're all great people, and they work very hard. But I do believe that the rate level is way too high for most people, and I think that corporations within the city need to pay a higher share to reduce the strain on residential customers.
Mr. Durbin, would you conclude, please?
And in conclusion, I hope that the 4% rate is reduced to not more than 2% per year, because 4% a year compounded over four years is a 17% rate hike, and I don't think that you need that in order to reach your, your capital goals stated of $35 million. I think there are other ways to raise the $35 million rather than a 17% rate hike. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. George Gwynn, please.
Good afternoon, once again. If there were a lot of people that showed up to these meetings, it'd be very easy to get a no on this, because you need 50%. But as you guys well know, it's almost impossible to get 50% vote on these kind of things, because people have other things going on in their lives. That said, it leaves it to you guys coming up with alternate solutions. And if people like the lady that spoke earlier that was having problems due to being evicted, if she was getting city manager's pay rate for picking up trash, I don't think there would be an issue. But unfortunately, there's not that many of those kind of jobs out there. But I think there are things that could be done. For instance, the value of water to the average person that's using just enough to drink and to bathe is not the same as it would be for, say, Anheuser-Busch. The person that uses it for their own use, or their family's use, is using it for survival, whereas an organization like Anheuser-Busch and others are making money off of it. So, maybe you could get a little contribution, because they got a, a good deal when they came here. That's why they came here, because they were getting a good deal. I'm not saying you should gouge them, but if you could get them to chip in a little bit, it would certainly ease the load for the people on the other end of the pay scale. And I also recall talking to Mr. Hicks about how long the pipes were lasting, and there was some mention of some of the pipes didn't last as long as perhaps they should. I remember back in the 80s, there was a problem with black pipe, that the manufacturer saved just a few cents in manufacturing, and it costs many thousands, maybe millions of dollars to repair some of the homes, the new homes that were constructed with this pipe. So, I think if you look for alternate solutions and maybe readjust the rates where they weren't quite so high, it would be a lot better, because I recall it hasn't been that long ago that you guys had another increase. So it's kind of like you're on a roller coaster of constant increases, and the public hasn't been getting the kind of raises in large. There are people that get those kind of salaries, but most people, their income has been flat, or maybe even it's on the downside. So, I think if you thought a little bit more, you could come up with something that might be more palatable to the public. But, you know, that's something that's in your hands, but I would hope you would look further. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Gwynn. Mr. James Johnson, please, our final speaker.
Greetings, James Johnson Jr., resident of Fairfield. Similar to a few of my co-residents, just want to bring up the idea, or I guess I haven't heard enough about the options to increase the share that some of the corporations and businesses are paying in Fairfield, as well as for new companies that come in, what type of developer impact fees they're paying to offset those costs, and just what are the options as far as increasing the amount that they are being charged, who are in those for-profit companies, versus increasing the costs for residents to pay in order to make up that, the difference that you're trying to raise? Thank you.
Thank you. If you would, please.
Couple of speakers have mentioned the idea of having corporations or businesses pay a higher cost to subsidize the cost for residents, and under Prop. 218, that can't be done. So that, the Constitution prohibits one class of ratepayers being charged fees that would subsidize another ratepayer. All the fees have to be based upon cost of service to individual ratepayers. So that option really is not available to you to do in establishing your rate structure in this case.
Mr. Vice Mayor?
Yeah. You know, it's funny, George, when you talk about if a lot of people were here, we'd say no, and you're here a lot, and, you know, I actually agree with you on more things probably than you, than you know. But unfortunately, like our city attorney said, you can't charge Anheuser-Busch more because they use more water. And I, I look at it, we're not paying for the water. We have water. People a lot smarter than us, a long time ago, made sure we had good water, and that's one of the reasons why the mayor and the city manager were talking tonight about this company out of Japan. People come here, Anheuser-Busch came here specifically for our water. They helped build the sewer plant. We are rapidly becoming nationally known as a food processing center, which is not a bad thing to be known. The problem is, is that when an engineer gets up and says, "City Council, in X amount of years, your pipes are going to fail, how do you pay for it?" That's what we're arguing about. And I don't even know if it's an argument. It's about a buck a month, but the gentleman that spoke about, okay, if it's amortized or compounded and it turns into a 17%, yeah, it probably does, I haven't done the math. So, how do we fix a pump? Or, or here's a good one, the East-West Main Transmission Line, and that ensures the people in Cordelia area get water in case of an earthquake, and, man, it's millions and millions of dollars, and they're going to finish that. Or Flint, Michigan, their water sucks, right? Because of, chromium 6 is the least of their worries, it's the lead. But when you have pipes that start breaking, we had one on Hillborne, right? Last week? The pipes were so far underground, why, I don't know. Again, I, I don't know that, but...
Below the sewer line?
Yeah, they were below, actually below the sewer lines, but the road, people were having to take a detour for, for a couple of days. And this is what you will find more and more of, and the pipes that we want to fix now are in the old part of town, probably built in the 40s, 50s. And then you could see from, from what the Assistant Public Works Director said, out how far, now is it going to cost 30 million or 35 million? I don't know, but I think that's their best estimate of what it's going to take. And I think we'd be derelict in our job and our duty if we just said, "We don't want to make a pay raise because the public's going to be, or a rate increase because the public's going to be mad at us, because that's all councils do is raise rates." George, you're absolutely right, everything keeps going up. It's not a roller coaster, roller coaster goes down. I've yet to see anything in California really go down, and I don't think it's going to occur, and I'm being pretty honest. But I think that the staff has made it where, folks, this is what we need, and if you believe in staff, then I think you have to believe that you're going to have to pay, and it's about a buck a month. But a buck a month adds up, a buck here, a buck there, and we certainly understand that. But I can't think of any other way to fund something for $35 million bucks that is going to start in about five years. I don't know where to come up from, come up with that kind of money. You can cut things, and they talked about things they've done, and we obviously look for cost savings, but sometimes, I don't want to be, I don't want to be so, I guess niggly would be a good word, where you're shorting Peter to pay Paul. I just, I wouldn't want, I wouldn't want to take that chance in five years. So, I certainly understand, and I appreciate when you get up here and, and you tell us, hey, don't raise it. And I think if we didn't comment, and I'm taking a little time, but hopefully I'm speaking for my colleagues too, is if we didn't take some time and just said, hey, thanks for talking, oh, bang, and we vote, and it does pass, you guys think, man, that was in one ear and out the other. And that's not the case. That's not the case at all. I want you to understand it, and I can't, I don't know how my compadres are going to vote, but we actually look at this, we study it, and if we can save money, we will. I just can't figure out how to save $35 million bucks over the next amount of years, so. But I do appreciate you getting up here, and, Mr. Walker, is he still there? Oh, there you are. Thank you. We had talked earlier, and, and hopefully it makes sense. We don't have to agree, I guess, with everything, but, but understand that we, we, we get you, and we understand what you're saying, and we do the best we can do. So, Mayor, thanks for letting me take some time. Colleagues, thanks.
I don't have any other request to speak cards, so I will close the public hearing and bring it back for council.
And before the deliberations start, we should note for the record that a majority protest has not occurred, so the council tonight does have the discretion to adopt the proposed rate increase.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I just wanted to say that I know back in, I want to say, was it 2010, was when we didn't raise the rates, because we were in a pretty bad economic time back then. And I think, and that was sort of a struggle, because we really, we really did need to. But we really could, I mean, our hearts went out to the people back then, because we knew the people in the recession back then... the people in the recession back then, it was a tough time. I don't think we even raised the rates at all. Am I right, Cat? You're shaking your head? Yes, okay, that's right. So, I mean, I said this the last meeting, I understand it, like the vice mayor said, it's a, I know a dollar here, a dollar there. But if the time kept going on where we didn't raise the rates at all, then we wouldn't have the water system we have now. And I look at the other cities, I'm looking at this Vallejo, 18.2 Vacaville, 5.5 Davis, 15%. And 20, that's huge compared, and we have better water than all of them. So, I mean, no one likes to raise rates, no one likes to raise taxes, but I understand that is a necessity, because we need to keep our water system going strong.
Any other comments, colleagues? Councilman Moy, please.
I always like to think of those who are extremely poor financially. And I've struggled with this, because I know, sir, that there are people like you. I've had times when I've been late on my water bill and was going to have my water shut off. And it is not a good feeling, and I work with the poorest of the poor every day. But, and this is really important, we can't let things fall apart and then get into a position, and it's possible, and it can happen fast, where we start having serious pipe breaks. We already recently had one. And then businesses that we need here for tax base won't come. And what if y'all have to drink bottled water like in Flint and Michigan? We can't go, we can't, we can't do that. And so I am going to vote yes on this, thinking it through a lot, thinking through it a lot, and thinking about the times I've struggled and with the people I work with who struggle every day. But I'm going to vote yes for this, because we have to do it.
Any other comments, colleagues? I just have one. Councilman Bertani, please.
I just wanted to echo the comments of my colleagues, you know, in my grandmother's economy, an ounce of, God bless her soul, an ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure. And that's really where we are right now with these rates. We are the gatekeepers that you've charged with the responsibility to make these kinds of tough decisions. And remember, our bills are going up as well. And it might catch you by surprise, but I don't think we're making the big bucks either. This is public service. And so remember, we're residents, and our bills have to go up as well. But at this point, we need to adhere to the research and the great work that our staff has done. They're the experts. They've made the recommendations, they've shown us the work. And at this point, we, I'm going to be voting yes for this as well. I remember when we didn't vote yes, but at this point, we have to make sure that we are in a position to prevent, you know, any breaches that may occur. That's the best outcome, and to deal with any breaches that may occur because of the age of these pipes. And so I'm going to be voting yes for this as well, for those reasons. Thank you. And thank you, staff, for a great report.
And I just have one final comment. All across the country, just like the pothole reference earlier this evening, infrastructure in these United States is failing in more places than it's improving. And it would be irresponsible for this elected body not to follow the expert work that our staff have done, laying out what I think is a reasonable, for me, it's a reasonable rate increase. And I'm well aware of those folks who think it's an unreasonable one, because it is. A dollar is not much, but for some, it's a whole lot. So having said that, entertain a motion then to approve Resolution 2017-270. It's been moved by Councilman Vicaro. Is there a second, please? It's been seconded by the vice mayor. All in favor? Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
And just note, Mayor, this did require a four-fifth vote. We received unanimous votes, so it has been adopted. And then the next item is the ordinance, and just explain briefly, the ordinance is before you, because it allows the council to do what it just did, which is to set rates by resolution before we set it by ordinance. And now state law has changed, and it does authorize us with the adoption of this type of ordinance to make this happen by resolution. So our recommendation is to introduce the ordinance for first reading tonight.
The motion's been introduced. It's been moved by Councilman Moy, seconded by Councilman Bertani. All in favor? Aye. Motion carries. Yes, both, please both. Our work is finished for this evening. We are adjourned until our next regularly scheduled meeting on December 19th in these council chambers. Thank you very much. Good night.